Section thirty-four eighty dash D, South Carolina Code nineteen eighty-seven is amended. All meeting immediately notified the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. This time we have our prayer by Mr. Govan.
Look, Father, we ask that you will give us the skills and the ability, Lord, to make decisions that are in the best interest of our children in this community. We ask God that you will allow us to come up with some solutions that will provide for the safety of our children as well. This be asking your name. Amen.
Now, Mr. Govan, prayers.
Let me read it to the flag under the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have anyone signed up since this conference, so we'll forego that part of the agenda. We don't have the set items. Minutes, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting. June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, Board of Detroit. Minutes, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, Special Call Meeting.
Chairman, I believe that we accept all three. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Here in all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Ayes, ahs, ahs. Next, regular Dr. County Board of Education meeting scheduled for August eighth, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. The board training room here at the administrative offices. Moving on, budget reports and federal funds report. Any paperwork? Anyone have any questions? Mr. Renee, I think we went over all that pretty much last time, so. Okay? Moving on to action items. Resolution two thousand twenty-two, general obligation bond. Can we say something about that?
Yeah, so that's Chairman Jefferson, members of the board and of our audience. This is an annual that we do for the general obligation bonds, which are for our capital projects that we have on an annual basis. The, again, if you recall, we sell bonds.
In September.
Yep, in September, and the amount will not exceed nine point five million dollars. These are the monies that we use for our technology. And for.
Major capital.
Yep, major capital funds, so. So, yeah, this is an annual process that we go through. This is the funding that we get in order to take care of large maintenance and renewal projects, as well as capital projects and technology. And so it's just asking for approval to be able to sell those bonds. And, you know, also, as you all recall from the retreat, we generally take these off every year in the springtime, so.
Resumption there, so. An entertaining motion for the resolution.
To provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding nine million five hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds, series two zero two-two of the school district of Darlington County, South Carolina, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
We have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? Here in all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Moving on to superintendent's update.
Warren, question.
Excuse me.
Renee, on those, we don't, not for this reading, of course, but for, we have to identify the items to be used within that nine point thing?
It has clause in there of what we use it for in the, in the resolution. I mean, it's capital projects, it lists. It doesn't have to list them specifically. Generally, when they sell the bond, they will ask for a more specific list, and we usually use the capital list.
We were behind at one time, and I guess while we're on that, just curious, we've pretty much resolved all those issues, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good progress.
We had all kinds of issues, but because of COVID and everything else, not getting projects done, I'm sure we're giving some leeway, but I know that we were catching up. We're clean. We got a clean slate. We're up to date with.
Yeah, and if you remember, even at the retreat, we talked a little bit about some of the new projects that we were entering in over the summertime as well. So that's, that's the sign we're looking for. We're looking at new items, and it's as close as this summer.
Do you have a period of time which you have to spend?
Well, it's not, it's not legally, but normally we try to keep them, keep no more than three open at a time. That's what.
They're not copying. I did it early, pretty, the whole thing.
All right.
You want to see it?
Fun, fun reading. I didn't read it.
Fun reading.
I'm not going to read it.
All right. Moving on to superintendent's update.
Did we took the book?
Yep.
Okay. We did, sure. We are moving along. Superintendent's update.
Don't slow things down.
Uh, no kidding. So, again, not a lot to report because, of course, we've had many meetings in the month of June, that we've been able to talk quite a bit about what's going on in the district. So we're just in planning phase. We're, you know, fastly approaching the start of school. We had principals' meetings this week where we'll be talking about, you know, the start of school, what that's going to look like, and any new types of items that are going to face us as we open schools. So we'll have those conversations. Then we'll have a week, next week, where we kind of lock everything down. And our teachers actually start back a week after that, which is the twenty-fifth. Our convocation is going to be on the twenty-sixth, which is that Tuesday, nine o'clock in the morning. And again, as I've kind of mentioned in the past, we are going to stick to the method of delivering that where not everybody in the district will be in one place. We haven't really had a chance to do that in a few years. So if you remember, two years ago, we met in Darlington at Kane Elementary, and then we livestreamed everywhere else and allowed everybody to stay at their home schools. So we're going to do that again. Last year, we were in Hartsfield, and so the Hartsfield area attended at the gym, at the arena, and then everybody else was able to watch in their locations. This year, we'll actually be in Lamar. So this will be, you know, again, we were in Darlington two years ago, Hartsfield last year, we'll be in Lamar this year in the gymnasium for the Lamar area schools. Those employees will attend in the gym with us, and then we'll livestream to the other schools, and they'll be able to watch those in their general areas. So tends to work out pretty good. That means people aren't having to travel across the district. So me personally, I like having sixteen hundred of us in one space and getting a chance to interact with each other. But I just think that, you know, that's one of the things technology is teaching us, is there's, there's some, you know, more efficient ways of doing things. And I think our employees have responded pretty well to not having to drive as much, too. So that's what we're planning on for convocation.
What day is that?
The twenty-sixth, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, from nine to eleven. And it won't be any later than that. Good, you know, that's the plan, is for two hours, but I think we'll be able to have it done a little bit sooner than that. And then, of course, our students start with us on August first this year. So Monday, August first, will be the first day of school registration. I've mentioned this as well. We're reopening our online registration process, which will be next Monday, the eighteenth. So we have about two-thirds of our students registered currently. So we're trying to get that last third, or anybody new that's moved into the area taken care of. We'll be putting out phone messages, social media, emails. Our schools will be contacting their particular students that they have, that they're showing that they have not registered. And again, just as a, as an FYI, if a family or student is not registered by the first day of school, they cannot attend school. So we do not have our schools open for registration during school hours. That'll be for after school. So anybody that's not registered by August first, and preferably during this online time, the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, will have to wait until after school to register.
Now, when you say after school, are you referring to, when you say after school, are you referring to August second? Are you referring to after school on August first?
Yeah, what we, what we don't want to do, and what, you know, our schools need to be teaching and need to be conducting instruction, August first, as soon as we start. And what we don't want is our lobby areas and offices overrun with folks that haven't done what everybody else has, which is register for school. So it's worked out really well the past few years as far as getting people to, to get registered and taken care of. We also understand you may be new to the area, you may move, you know, the week of school. We understand that. So we can accommodate that. But I think our schools really appreciate being able to get down to business immediately on that first day of school. And like I said, we've got two-thirds of our students registered already, which is a great number. And so I think we'll get most everybody else taken care of that following week.
But the reason I ask that is because I think it's important that we get that word out because you will have people the first day. And the ripple effect of that is that people will call board members to ask the same question. So I think, and since you were doing it face to face live, I mean, I think that some, I don't know how we do it, but I think that we need to make it happen to do that.
Absolutely. Mr. Govan, we've done this for the past two years.
Yeah.
So we've actually done this exact same situation the past two years and made sure the message to everybody as much as, much as we can message, right, to parents to make sure to get their, their children registered. So again, we'll do everything we can to let them know about it. And for the folks that don't know about it and don't get their children registered, we'll see them after school on the first.
What are, how are the virtual county numbers looking?
They're pretty consistent with the last year on the elementary and middle school, which is, you know, I think the maximum we're allowed to put in there is three hundred for grades, first grade through eighth, three months, two seventy, is what, you know, and I think we'll be holding in that two twenty to two fifty range at this point in time. And then high school, you know, that, the requests that we have are similar to what we had last year. We're looking at, again, making sure we can cover all the classes that the students need and how we're going to do that. So we're also looking at some new ways to cover those classes, too. So, for example, we've had to pull teachers from across the district to teach during their planning times, or that's one of their teaching times, right? So they may have two in-person and one virtual, or they may have three in-person and do a virtual on their own. We're actually, the software and technology we have now, we can take that on more ourselves and have teachers that teach the South Carolina standards do that, but we don't employ them, so they're not ours. And we're not necessarily depending on our own people to teach an extra load just so we can cover the classes for the students, so. Let me see if there's anything else. Vacancies, we are working very hard to fill everything. Again, each day, we're signing off more and more, so I think that number's whittled down.
Forty-three.
Forty-three total, and that, that includes all different vacancies, is that correct? For, for teaching positions, that's, that's, if it's, if it's not a teacher in a classroom, or that's, is that specific?
Certified classroom teacher vacancies.
Okay.
None of our schools are fully staffed right now.
Right. Good. And so you got to think, we've got eight hundred, approximately eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty teachers, and, you know, we're looking at forty. And some of those, if you remember last year, we kind of had thirty to forty vacancies all year long. Some of them were extra positions, and we were able to cover, you know, because they were, we were able to cover those classes. Don't anticipate any issues. We're not in any significant stress in comparison to prior years. We have plans for any classroom to have a certified person at the start of the school, so. Feel good about that. I will once again thank the board for your efforts with the budget to allow our teachers their raise and to allow all of our other employees their raise. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback since the last meeting, and, and people saying thank you. And so you need to hear that, too. I know you get, you get lots of emails when folks aren't quite so happy, but you need to know when people are appreciative. And I think I've had a lot of positive response, and a lot of people saying, you know, thank you and thank the board.
So that reflects in this, throughout the fifteenth, check?
For year-round employees, it will, but not for regular one ninety. So basically, school personnel, like teachers and teaching aides, bus drivers, those types of folks, that won't take place until they come back. But for year-round employees, like custodians that are year-round currently, or bookkeeper, not secretaries that are working, maintenance workers, office workers up here, it will go into effect on the fifteenth.
Oh, good way.
And that's, you know, again, that's superintendent's report. We're just planning and getting ready, and it's coming quickly. This has been a.
Short something.
I'm glad we got out of it because we're coming back early, so. But I, I think we'll all be grateful by the time October rolls around. We'll see some time there in the end of February, which is what else we're looking for. That's everything I have for superintendent's.
Questions, anyone? Okay, we'll move on to board member input. This is more.
I don't want to cause any work, additional work, but if it's easy to retrieve over the next month or so, just curious if we could get the number of students enrolled for the five-year trailing to the current year? And then when we started virtual, the same for those, what's for virtual and which are in-person? And then likewise with employees, total number of employees? And do you break it down, or can you easily, don't do a bunch of work, but if it's easy to break down between administrative and classroom, I say administrative, administrative and ancillary, other, if that makes sense?
And so, you know, just, and we probably need to do it by fund, too, because, you know, we're using Essar funds to pay for a lot of positions right now that are, you know, what we call short-term positions, like part-time teaching assistants. So we, you know, should be able to get it by fund as well, to kind of give you an idea what that is.
But while you mentioned that, how have y'all been or able to find, you know, again, they give us this money and they give us a time period to spend it, and it's so difficult to put the programs in place because we couldn't get the person done in place? And we talked about going to get retirees, going to do this. How has that been? Have we been able to find people to do the reading recovery or doing all the remediation that needed to be done, or still needs to be done? But how did that go? I hate to say we ain't got much to report on.
So we've actually got data to show, you know, kids that were involved with reading recovery and reading interventions, for example. So if an intervention has touched a student, or if a reading recovery teacher touched a student, we've been able to follow down and get their data so we can, you know. My plan is when we, when we do the, the normal annual data presentation of SC Ready, when those scores are not embargoed annual, we present those scores. We can talk also about the students that have been touched by some of these other programs that are auxiliary programs, right, from the Essar lines. But to your, to your question about how, how we've been able to fill positions, it's been hit or miss.
One time, we talked about giving stipends to someone who wanted to work overtime, additional time, and how could we do it? Could we do it? What are some creative ways of giving our own people opportunities, yet accomplishing our goal of being able to tend to those people? Say, okay, I got a class at three thirty, I'll offer this from four to six, whatever, whatever could be done to bridge that gap. And I know we couldn't find the people, it was going to be difficult, so anyway, I just didn't know what we.
Yeah, so it, you know, to your point, and I think, you know, everybody felt this past year, you know, it was tough getting people to work the after-school programs. And it wasn't for lack of money, you know, it's, you know, some folks just said, look, I, it's not the money. I just can't do it, right? I can't do it. I'm, you know, working as much as I can just to take care of the kids during the day. That eased up better for us as the spring wore on, and we weren't dealing as much with the health fees and people getting out. So that eased up. But I can tell you, like, there were some schools that they had every one of their part-time folks that were hired, because we had a lot, we hired a lot of part-time TAs to assist with the small group instruction. So some of our schools, they were able to hire everyone that they were allocating. Some of our schools maybe only had twenty-five percent of those folks, so. It just, it was hit or miss depending on the school in the area. But, you know, I, I think what we're finding in, you know, Renee's group, and I, we talk about this all the time, that Essar, it's kind of a moving target now because of what you described. Because if, you know, you plan and you budget to spend this amount of money, well, if you don't, you know, use it.
Could have broken the pledge.
Right. Well, now you've got, you've still got that money, so what, you know, what's the next steps for that? What, you know, how are we planning for that? So I'll be curious to see how, at the national level, you know, they've kind of backed off some of the timelines already on some of the Essar money pots. I would not be surprised, because of what we've just been talking about, every district across the country is talking about, I would not be surprised to see a timeline back off as well as that. Because, again, we've had discussions at this table. I could probably make it last ten years. I could have a plan in place to make sure that we utilize that money for the next ten years in an efficient way, you know. So because we know, again, we're not able to expend it the exact way that we said we would.
So what is the process for funneling information to those authorities that make the decisions on that? I mean, if it's a federal funding, so what is the process to get to the state and then the state to the federal to understand the dilemma that not only us, but all, we said this at the beginning, at the onset, when they put those constraints on it, we can't get our teachers in the classroom, we can't get enough teachers for record classroom, much less what it's going to take to put in the program for remediation. So have we, have we been funneling it, or does someone, I mean, is there an organization, is there a group? I mean, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, we say, we talk about it, we feed it around, but there's got to be some way of creating.
You know, we bring this up, superintendents bring this up at the state level, you know, on a monthly basis. So we, we talk to the state education department, and they tell us, you know, it's pretty much a federal decision, that it's pretty much out of their hands.
But they've got to be the lobbyists to go, I mean, you follow me, I would assume.
Absolutely, absolutely. So then, then you talk about, you know, our legislators, and we talk about folks that have voices in Washington that potentially are in our state that could carry that message. So, you know, the, the key, with anything that is done at the federal level, it's a hard wall to climb, but it can still be climbed.
All right, so I'll, I'll close that, set a question second. With, when we, and if we ever do our legislative gathering again, could we consider bringing in the federal boards? I mean, why would they, I mean, again, there's always much we can do at the state level, okay? We beat it, we're dictated to. So if we want someone to listen to us, especially now when the federal funds are such a large portion of what we're doing and guiding and directing, they need to hear how they're really being used and the dilemma that we're having, the problem we're having, were they able to use that? If someone's going to get back, I mean, we can't just sit and talk about it in circles among ourselves and nothing's really being done. Where are they getting their information to go back and make these decisions? So just put it in your hat, if we ever get together again, we'd need to ask those guys, I mean, our entire state. So.
I agree.
Last one, I quit. So we're getting ready to start back to school, as you say, it's sure to go quick. With health, we know there's a bunch of COVID going around. It seems to be treated differently than what it has been in the past. Obviously, we've learned, we've done, it becomes, it's almost becoming a part of our everyday. I mean, we had a ton in our workforce and how it's treated. So are we already having conversations now about when we go in? How do we, we might as well go and start talking about it, because it will be here, and there will be cases there every day. I mean, again, we had four on our floor, we had twelve in our building, I mean, so, but they aren't six, six. No one's, they haven't talked about it, it's just something that happens. But what are we going to do at the school level? What's, what is the state talking about? What's the protocol with the new whatever?
Right, whatever the new is.
Right, there will be a new, it is a new, it is a different strain. Every time we talk about the booster shots, now they're saying that the booster shots don't last thirty days. They're talking like, forget it, doesn't, there's all kinds of crazy new stuff, but no one's been compiling, we just don't talk about it, which I'm fine with, don't get me wrong. But we're going to have to discuss it, we're going to have to sign on a game plan for us and everybody else, how we want to treat things.
Yeah, and Jamie, it's interesting, we were having this conversation this morning, you know, because we've, we've got to talk to our principals about it. And if you, if you've noticed, you're not hearing.
And it's not who's the contact, it's not this, it's not, we're out five days, ten days, students, the whole classroom. None of that's going on at the workplace, and everybody's doing fine.
Yeah. So, you know, if you, if you take the lead from where we ended the school year and what's kind of transpired over the summertime as well, that it's going back to, if you're sick, you stay home?
Like you would any, any other situation, you need to stay home.
End of store. End of store. That, that's pretty much where we're at at this point in time.
Are we still offering the testing out here?
We are, we are.
So we'll continue to do that?
As long as it's, we're not having to pay for it, so, you know, as long as we're not having to pay for it.
Does anybody use it?
Yeah, yeah, you'd be surprised, the past couple of weeks, it's kind of picked up a little bit, so. So I, I mean, I've actually used it a couple of times just to make sure.
Just for fun, you missed it.
Not just for fun, but just to make sure if I'm going to be around some folks that I'm worried about. I don't want to get anybody sick, but.
He worried about us.
He'd like to get rid of a few of us.
And, you know, again, you're just not hearing a collective conversation about this. And so what you are hearing is, if you test positive, that you need to stay home, you know, from the time you had symptoms, or from the time you tested positive, you need to stay home for five days. That's what the medical profession is telling everybody. And then you can come back, you know, with a mask for the next five days. That's what the medical professionals are recommending, right? But, you know, I think, to your point, we're not hearing about as much severe illness at all. In fact, a lot of the people I'm talking to that are testing positive, you know, they don't have any significant symptoms. They're finding it out, you know, because they go in to have a test done, you know, for something else, and they test positive. Doesn't mean it's gone away, and it doesn't mean that people aren't, you know, getting sick, because I know some other folks that, that said, Patty, I wouldn't expect it much, and, you know.
But, you know, we had to think about one regular shot, one booster, two boosters, four boosters. But no one's, there's no protocol, because boosters are so worn out and gone. When's the last time, so do I start over from scratch?
There's no recommendations, yeah, there's no recommendations, so.
I don't want to start something, I'm just saying, we just need to think of those issues that come about.
Well, I think the big change that we all realized this past spring was, once we got away from close contacts, you know, that, that everything kind of eased out for us. And so when you're not having to, you know, follow up and talk to everybody that people have been around, which, you know, those, that's not what's being recommended anymore. So whether it be from DHEC, or whether it be from physicians or anybody else, it's going back to, you know, if you, if you're sick, you need to stay home. If you test positive, you need to stay home for five days from the time you had symptoms or from the time you tested, and then come back to school, you know, come back to work. And so I, I don't think, one of the things we were talking about earlier today was, when we get to the point where it's not five days anymore, I think that's when you'll really see things. We won't be having a whole lot of conversations about it. But when we're, when, when the medical professions, professionals are still saying you should quarantine for five days, you know, that's what we have to go by, so.
Just talk, give them a plan.
It's a fair question, because when's the last time we've really talked about it, all right? And so here we are about ready to start school again, but I, I think we're all wanting to be as realistic about what we're dealing with. We want everybody to be safe, but at the same time, we also. We want everybody to be safe, but at the same time, we also recognize we got to conduct school and we got to have our kids in school. And we got to have our staff with us too. So.
So if they have it now, are they paying the medical leave now?
It is still, we still have the COVID leave policy in place. And like I said, I think when they start to change that five-day piece, then all of a sudden I think we can have some other conversations about that. But, but, you know, one of the things is if, if the medical professional is saying you have to stay out of work, you know, think about that in comparison to some of the other types of illnesses. If I had a cold in the past and I felt good enough to be at work, I'd just stay at work. And, you know.
You don't have that option now.
You don't have that option now. Right? So it's still, if your medical professional says you can't be at work or you can't be at whatever, I think until we get some leniency with that, we still have to keep working through it. But.
So that's the only CDC or DHEC kind of governance that's on us for this starting school year right now is the five-day.
At this point in time.
It's just nothing with family members, cousins, brothers, ancestors, whatever. It's just you and then Mark.
It's just you. So.
It's good. I mean, it's worked good. Everybody seems to be.
Well, and I think, you know, the medical professionals will tell you, you know, you've got one you're pretty close to. That I think we're now on version four or five. Each, you know, version is less and less, you know, of an impact medically. So, you know, I think what we're seeing is the more and more it's out there, the more and more people aren't affected by it as negatively, certainly as we dealt with the past couple of years. So listen, we, we want to keep our kids safe. We want to keep our staff safe. We want to conduct school. We just got to find that road down the middle of it to where we keep everybody in and take care of them. So.
Okay. You go, Shane. Good.
Um, so two things. The back-to-school events that typically held during school, beginning of school, there will be one on July the thirtieth at Pride Hawk. That one's going to be in the morning. I think it's ten to twelve. And the other is July the twenty-eighth, and that's going to be at Hartsfield High School on the backside as it did last year, on the Washington Street side. And it's from three, I think, three to five, three to six. And it will be a drive-through. So you'll just drive through, pick your bags or pick whatever they're going to give out and keep it rolling.
Okay.
That's it.
Richard?
I'd just like to thank all our teachers and employees for a great year this past year. And let's all look forward to a new year and new opportunities.
Ms. Kelly? Good. Well, we've already heard about vacancies. I don't have to ask about those. Forty-three, right? So hopefully my next meeting will have.
You said it. You hear from me. You said it. You said it. You said zero. He said zero.
Zero.
Yep.
Sounds good to me. I think Florence Kelly said they had zero, right? A little paper in there.
Is that right?
Right.
I don't think they mentioned their salaries, though.
They did mention salary.
They haven't mentioned. By the way, we, first-year teachers in Dorlton County made forty-three plus an extra thousand for being a first-year induction teacher. That's starting salary of forty-four thousand dollars in Dorlton County.
Forty-four.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
First-year teacher in Dorlton County.
I couldn't hear.
Forty-four thousand dollars for a induction, first-year induction teacher.
First-year induction teacher, forty-four.
In Dorlton County.
I said Dorlton County.
I'm not, I'm not sure about those folks around us.
Just make sure I can hear you.
We talked in the past about test scores, about we've been here, we've been there. We're not satisfied with where we are. I know, I think one school I know of especially met, I think they met all the goals, the Mars Fog and maybe some more. I'm not sure.
There are.
Not just calling all, I'm sure everybody's recognized. And you're always complaining about not here, not here. Well, so congratulations to them for meeting all their, all their goals so far. And I'm sure there's some others too. There's no criticism about that one. So we are making progress, people. We are making progress. Not moving one beat by any means, but we have made some progress and our teachers can be commended for that. They're working hard. I'm telling you, they really do. They probably don't get it, they don't get enough credit, I'm sure. We do appreciate every one of you and looking forward to another, you know, good year this year. Right?
Absolutely.
And you get to start back early. So do you mind twenty-fifth, so you get an opportunity sooner than later? All right. What do we vote?
Didn't have to know that.
I'm sure they won't like that. Personnel actions.
I'm going to accept the recommendation of personnel from the administration.
I'll second.
Motion second. Discussion. I would favor the motion to accept the personnel actions. I oppose. I have it. Executive session. Have the motion for that.
I'm going to go on executive session to discuss personnel and then contractual matters.
I'll second.
Second, okay. I favor the motion. I, I, we're now going to executive session. Do you take any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration for the hiring of a principal at DCIS.
Second.
Second, we discuss it. Here in the hall, in favor of the motion, I oppose. I have it.
I'm going to adjourn.
Your motion adjourned. Second, hall in favor. We stand adjourned. Thank you.